President.
Present. Oh, well, gee.
President.
Mayor, everyone is present.
I call to order the Fairview City Board of Commissioners meeting, January the 3rd, 2019. Second item on the business is called order, which has been done, and third item is prayer and pledge. If you'd stand and bow your head, please. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings that you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits of each of the matters placed before us, and act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Crutcher, second vice mayor Rainey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Crutcher?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Item five, public hearings, none this evening. Item six, citizens' comments. None this evening. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. Fiscal year 2018 audit presentation. Mr. Dougherty. Welcome, sir.
Welcome, thank you, Mayor and Board. I'd like to introduce John Rowland. He's a CPA with Yuri Howland Associates, and he's going to present some highlights of the audit this year.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Rowland.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Board. Again, my name is John Rowland. I'm an audit manager for Yuri Howland Associates, and we performed the audit this year from June 30, 18-year-end, as well as the two previous years. And the biggest thing I would like to report, happy to report, is for the third year in a row, you've got a unqualified audit opinion. That's a clean audit opinion, good audit opinion. It's what you want. It's what the city earned. Revenues did, were kind of flat this year. Made about the same thing, actually about $45,000 less than the year before. City expenditures went way up, probably $1,600,000. But these were planned, they were budgeted for. You only had three departments that came in over budget, and they were not significant individually or together. So it appears that the city is doing what they want to be doing, what they need to be doing. We found no significant deficiencies in the internal control system, and we have no reportable conditions to report to the Board.
Mr. Rowland.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item eight, staff comments and month of reports. Subsection A, Police Department, Chief Humphries. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. We'll just give a brief overview of the month of December 2018. Our staffing, we're staffed to budget, which is 21 officers. Everybody's there and present accounted for. Overtime for the month was 256 hours overtime, and we had 96 hours of training for the month. As we move to the operational side, our activity, we had 1,036 either initiated or calls for service, which is total activity. 92 arrests. Out of those, just some of the highlight ones that often come to the forefront, domestics were four, DUI was three, drug-related arrests was 32, and then nine in theft. Did 23 citations for the month. Traffic accidents were 10. All 10 were just considered property damage. We're glad to say there were zero injuries and no fatalities. Part of who we are is also some public relations. We did go over this last month, but just to recap for the December month, we, the 15th, we did the shop of the cop, assisted 52 children with Christmas. The 19th and the 20th was the day we did the traffic stops for the gift cards. And again, thank our contributors to that, donors, the Secret Santa that gave the cards out for Oscars, and then Jefferson's did so also. And then lastly, let's see if we can move. There you go. Just the last thing, on December 18th, I conducted a surprise audit of my evidence room, of my evidence custodian. She was not aware of that, in that we pulled five cases at random, looked in the RMS system, see where they are told to be logged, take her in there, and check that against the log. All of those were where they were supposed to be. Evidence room was in order, and there was zero deficiencies.
Good job, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Subsection B, Fire Department, Chief Hughes. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners. I'm going to do a brief overview of the month of December, and then an overview of the year-end for the Fire Department. We ran 85 emergency calls for the month of December, which was down from the previous December. You can see the comparison from 2017 to 18. Our call volume was up this year. Last year, we ran 1,043 calls. This year, we ran 1,111 calls. Calls for December by type are largest, 64% medical calls. We had five motor vehicle accidents that required dispatch by the Fire Department. Other calls are fire alarms, lift assist, citizen service calls, and then we had three fire calls. 2018, the whole year summary for the 1,111 calls stayed pretty true to form. We ran about 64% medical calls, and then the breakdown of the other calls are there. 23 total fires for the year. And then Fire Department training for the month of December. We had 443 hours of total training, and this is total for everyone in the Fire Department. The biggest portion is company training, and that's where each shift trains together. And then the daily training that they also do on shift. And then the total training for the year, the next slide. Fire Department total training for the year was 5,372 hours. And again, the biggest portion is the company training by the shifts and then the daily training. EMS training that you see, it says 93 hours. We actually do more than that. 93 hours was hands-on EMS training. The other training and the target training solution is the 515 hours. Part of that is online EMS classes that we're required to take. And that's it.
Good job, sir. Thank you. HC is Public Works. I believe we'll have that on our next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Item nine, consent agenda. Minutes from the December 20th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting, and minutes from the December 20th, 2018 Board of Commissioners workshop.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have it first by Commissioner Crutcher, and a second by Commissioner Lucas, excuse me, Burks. Any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Crutcher?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, no business. Old business, none. Item 11. Item A, acceptance of the fiscal year 2018 audit.
Move to accept the audit.
Second.
Move to accept by Commissioner Crutcher, and second by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Crutcher?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, subsection B, ordinance 2018-24. Vice Mayor Rainey?
An ordinance to amend the city of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22 parcel 130.02, consisting of two acres located on Sweetbrier Road from an RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 medium-density residential zoning district. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Rainey, second Commissioner Crutcher. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Yes, Mayor, excuse me. Christopher Burks?
This matter came up before the Planning Commission. I believe it was the November meeting, if I'm correct. It did get a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission at that time. In essence, what this will do is finish out Sweetbrier Springs. I believe it's going to be four lots, if I'm correct.
Four.
It is four. And Mr. Caldwell, who I believe may be here tonight, if he'll come up to the podium in case there's any questions. Mr. Caldwell, can you explain what you're wanting to do with this?
Just finish out that side of the subdivision with half-acre lots and build the houses. I mean...
Okay. Will it match the rest of the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as the restrictions and size and styles and things? Yeah.
So in essence, you're just completing what's already there?
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I have. Sir, any further discussion?
Can we, is there any way we can make it bigger? I mean, mine on my computer is not easily...
Any further discussion?
I'd move to grant the rezoning as requested.
Point of order, Mayor, there's already a motion and a second.
Motion's already on the floor, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
It's a new year.
Hearing no further discussion, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Rainey?
Aye.
Crutcher?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, guys.
Item 11C, ordinance 2018-25. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Check with myself here. Let me see if I can see it there. Ordinance 2018-25, an ordinance to amend the city of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 22 parcel 145.01, consisting of one acre located at 7605 Hurley Lane from RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 medium-density residential zoning district. Owners, Mark and Linda Williams.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Crutcher, second by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Planning Director, I had a question about the layout of this lot. If he splits it into what he's wanting to do, into two different lots that are R20, will he be able to meet all the setbacks that are required to build on those two separate lots?
He will. It's, he plans to split it directly into 20,000. Each one will be 20,000 exactly, and he's got more than adequate road frontage with Hurley Lane and Highway 96, and the setbacks. We did a rough layout in the office, and he should have plenty of room.
It's an odd-shaped?
It is.
Two lots. That's why I was concerned that it would not meet that.
What are the requirements for the setbacks?
Don't have that information in front of me. For R20, might be 35, 15, and 20. But I know that we did look at it quite closely to make sure that it would meet the setbacks and the frontage and the minimum lot size for two half-acre lots.
Sorry, I thought I understood you to say you did a rough layout.
Yes, when he came to, when he came several months ago to look at, that's an old plaque that shows, that shows the lot, when it was originally split into his lot and the neighboring lot. So that's, that's not, that's not actually what it will look like. It'll be, the lot in yellow will be the one that's split in half.
Does it, I mean, how, I mean, how will it be split? I mean, will it be, I mean, I'm assuming, never mind, withdraw that question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we go to roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Crutcher?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries?
Motion carries. Item 11D, ordinance 2018-26. Vice Mayor Rainey?
An ordinance to amend the city of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 043 parcel 23.00, consisting of 111 acres located on Cox Pike from an RS40 low-density residential zoning district to an R20 PUD medium-density residential planned unit development. Zoning district 141 proposed lots.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Crutcher, second by Commissioner Burks. Is there any discussion?
Can I have just a moment? I'm having some technical difficulties. My computer decided to restart.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't see it either. It was still crinkled and wrinkled.
I've got a paper copy, if y'all would like to go ahead with discussion.
I have some questions.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Have we established the sunset for the PUD?
It's expired.
Okay. When did it expire? Was it January 1st? And if we're doing a PUD, we have green space. Is a developer here?
Ma'am, I'm Jamie with SCC for the New...
Welcome, Jamie.
Yes, thank you.
And can you define the green space that you're planning to put in the PUD?
Yes, ma'am. Of course, on this drawing, we've got, what's required is, exactly, we've got 19 and a half, almost 19 and a half acres, which in a percentage is set, almost 20%, 17% open space. And within that open space, we're providing walking trails, totlot, pavilions, stuff like that. So, but yes, ma'am, we have plenty of open space. And we've got buffers along the, most of the property lines to the west there. If you're looking at some of those main subdivisions, we stayed off of that. Most of that's the step systems, can be all green space buffering those bigger subdivision up there to the north, east, west portion of our property, northwest portion of our property. But yes, ma'am.
Do you have more than one entrance into that subdivision?
No, we've got, well, we've got a main focal point coming off of the main entrance there, but we do have a second entrance and right-of-way to Lake Road, but we're going to keep it locked. We've already met with the Fire Department on the special code and gate, crash gate for them to access and stuff through there. And we've going to put some nice brick post and stuff there. We've talked about the gate there, and we're paving it all the way over to Lake Road, and we're putting a nice wooden fence along both sides.
Okay, but that is only for emergency?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Entrance and exit.
Yes, ma'am. And we're providing a left-turn lane and stuff on the Cox Pike.
Has there been any kind of traffic study down there?
Yes, ma'am.
And what did it show?
That, it really didn't even say that we even had to do a left-turn lane into the site. We're proposing it because the two entrances that are so close together, I forgot the name of that subdivision next to us, Hall View Meadows, but, is it right? Yeah.
Clearview Meadows.
Anyhow, next to Hall Lane, we're proposing the left-turn lane into the site. Of course, that's going to be our focal point, and we've widened it based on the Planning Commission meeting. They wanted us to have a nice, wider entrance coming in for any type of emergency vehicles to have to pass, or if somebody was stranded on the entrance and stuff like that, so. But we have done a traffic report. It didn't say that we were required, but we're proposing one as part of our deal. And it's in the booklet I mentioned that we're going to install a left-turn lane into the site.
And how many houses are you putting in there?
141 houses, but if you do the math, based on the density zone, we could get 244. But based on the creeks and the tributaries that go through it, the step system soils and stuff like that, we're only allowed to get 141 lots and have it where it flows and get the amenities and stuff that are on there.
Any further discussion?
Well, it's actually, there's not enough, we debated this kind of back and forth a little bit at Planning Commission. We would rather have just one entrance coming in for security reasons for the subdivision. And that's why we made the entrance a lot wider for three cars to basically go in, and that would be emergency access to go out. There's only 30 foot of right-of-way on the Lakeview roadside on that adjacent property. It's not, it's not a 50-foot right-of-way. We're stubbing a 50-foot right-of-way to that 30-foot right-of-way for in the future, when that comes, if anything happens over there where the city could acquire, or somebody does something on the other side, they'll get, they'll dedicate another, you know, 20 feet over there to have a 50-foot right-of-way. So if they wanted to connect those. But we, we wanted most of our traffic to come out at one focal point at the entrance, have it nicely landscaped with a turn lane where everybody's going into that, feeding into the main corridor.
You're saying it's only 30 feet over there?
Correct.
Because on this drawing, it shows 50 feet.
Well, it's 50 feet on our subdivision.
Oh, I'm with you.
That was what we, that was what we worked out at Planning Commission. That's what Will and all of us worked out. We wanted to go ahead, that if it ever did extend out and we were, the city was able to acquire that, then we could make it 50 foot over there and then just open it up.
I see it now.
If you wanted to. But we're going to pave it all the way, it's going to be paved all the way over to Lake Road. With a wooden privacy fence all the way down through there on both sides.
Would it not be better to go ahead and try to make another entrance into that subdivision? Because I, you know...
We're not opposed to it, but we just felt that we would rather have, make it safe and have people come up with that one entrance with a left-turn lane, plenty of site distance there, and focal coming through that versus the Lake Road exit, having people funneling from up there. That was just, I mean, it's, and that's what we ended up working out at Planning. Now, we're not opposed to either one of them. That's why we went and met with emergency management, Tony met with them. We determined what locks they wanted to put the gates up there and stuff like that. But I mean, if it's the dredders of this commission, then I mean, we'll open it back up.
Well, I mean, I understand that your entrance is going to be safe, but Cox Pike from 100 to your, might not be some of the safest areas for all those cars to be trying to get through.
Well, that's what we, you know, we would rather feed our, at that single entrance at the front. That's why we want to make it a grand entrance, nice landscaping, wider for three cars, and you know, do nice entrance signs with a turn lane going into the site as our main focal point. That was our vision.
And stormwater runoff, since we seem to be having a lot of issues with that?
No, we've got plenty of ponds on here. That's why we've already had our HD study, which is hydrologic determination study, and which ones are, which creeks and ditches are wet weather conveyances versus streams. So we already know where the ponds are going to be, where we're going to have to place them. So we've already got them shown. As you look up there, there's several of them. Pond shown kind of up there in the north middle, one in the center of the property, well, actually, a couple of them in the center of the property, and one back here in the back. But yes, ma'am, to answer your question, we have looked at for erosion and runoff. And then everything dumps into that, and then goes into the, what's that big lake behind it? Yeah, the lake right behind it to the north.
What's your smallest lot?
15,000 square foot.
And how many of those?
If I was guessing, I would, I don't know exactly off the top of my head, I'd say 60, something like that, 50 or 60. Most of them are the 20. Now, all these homes in here are going to be all brick also. All the homes are going to be all brick, 100% brick, all four sides, concrete drives, you know, with the gravel walking trails all through the site. Yeah, with, entrance will be sprinkled, we're going to have nice landscaping, brick entrances and stuff like that. But I want to emphasize, it's going to be an all-brick neighborhood. That's kind of what we talked about with Fairview, the last few projects we brought in, trying to bring a product that's all brick, a little more. Yeah. Any other questions or comments or suggestions?
The all-purpose fields that you have?
Yes, sir.
In the north area, there was some discussion at the Planning Commission about, the only way to access those is through a walking trail.
We, since that, since that, we did add a 20-foot access from lot number 40, I guess, 41, between 41 and 42. So we have two access points there now, based on that meeting. I changed that, right after that meeting, we went back, and we widened those lots to have an access coming in from that side and then from the bottom side, where the trails would meet, so you could actually loop the trail all the way around both fields.
Fortunately, due to some technical issues here, I'm having to look at this paper, which is very, very small.
I'm sorry?
Is there any parking over there? So if people want to access that field, have some sporting equipment, whatever they want to take over there, there's a place they can park and carry it there? Or are they supposed to just kind of walk it in?
Well, my thoughts were the walk, whatever they're going to carry in, and if you needed to park, if you're not, you can park at the end of those cul-de-sacs. If it's just some kids going to go, typically, what we visualize is people going to walk to the totlot with their kids and play, or the pavilion, and then walk to the walking trails. You're going to be walking. The purpose of the walking trail is kind of to walk. It's our vision to get exercise and physical therapy to walk. So, but if you needed to carry something to meet through there, the end of those cul-de-sacs would be where I would pull over and park in those cul-de-sac bubbles at both, at both the two trail ends.
How far is it from the cul-de-sac to the...
Well, the ball, each cul-de-sac, I mean, 100 feet, literally 100 feet to the ball field from the cul-de-sac there, but to the pavilion and to the totlot, it's right there at the road. You can pull up and park and park, and there's no houses there in front of that pond, so you could park several cars down through there and in the cul-de-sac if you chose not to walk the walking trails. But the purpose of it is, is to have walking trails for the kids to walk, people, adults to walk, and people to walk to the parks.
Speaking for grandparents everywhere. Sometimes that gets a little, sometimes that gets a little hard.
Oh, I know. And that's why we're doing that, the gravel, the, based on the Planning Commission meeting, we, Burks and all, we had a huge discussion on what type of material. We're using that real fine, you know, where you could actually roll handicap wheelchairs down through it, but a real, the five-foot wide, the fine gravel walking trails. So it's, you know, it's easier to go through there. And, but anyhow, it's, we're trying to promote the walk.
Of course.
Physical therapy and walking. We should get my kids to walk more.
You got, you're building this nice subdivision with all-brick homes, and you're going to put gravel walking trails?
Well, it's a fine gravel, a lot of places, that's what they do, not the pavement, but it's the fine, it's the real fine compacted walking trails. It's almost like an asphalt, yeah, it's almost like an asphalt. It's compacted, it's just, as you've seen, it's the real, it's not like a gravel gravel, it's the real fine grit gravel. That's in, several of them, you know, like Spring Hill, we've done them, you know, do them there some.
And that's ADA compliant for wheelchairs?
It can be, yes, ma'am.
Can be, or is it?
Yeah, I mean, depending on your slopes and your stuff like that, when we regrade everything, of course, you can't have certain grades and make certain things. But you, the... But you, the vision of it is to be, have a walking trail for people to actually do activity physically.
Oh, I understand.
Walk is our goal. And if we need to make, you know, make sure everything meets ADA for the slopes and stuff like that, we will. I mean, it's the goal, our thoughts were to just provide walking trails between all the open space, between the two, you know, all the open space areas and stuff.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about the slope as much as when you said that you could, that you could use a wheelchair on those trails with the gravel.
Yeah, I mean, if you've seen, it's almost like an asphalt. It's just really fine compacted gravel. I call it gravel. It's really just, yes, it's like an asphalt shingle like Tony said, but.
And Mr. Reed, and I appreciate what you're saying. It's ideas of walking trails, people can walk there. And if everybody is 30 to 36 that buys houses here, that's probably great. The problem is, that's not reality, right? There's going to be older people that will buy that may not be able to walk those trails. For instance, grandparents, some grandparents aren't as healthy at their age and be able to traverse that area.
They don't have to walk it. It's just, it's set up for that.
I understand, but if they want to use it, take grandkids to go out there and play, they may not be able to have access to that.
As far as the grandkids to play, the tot lot and the pavilion, it's right there off the road. You'll have sidewalk to the pavilion, sidewalk to the tot lot. So their kids could play with no activity. If they didn't, if they were the type that you're talking about, they didn't want.
They can play there, but they wouldn't necessarily have access to the multipurpose field.
Well, why would they if they couldn't walk though? I mean, if you're, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know what I mean?
Because it's an amenity that they're paying for, that they might want to be able to use it. That's what I was thinking, if you had maybe closer access, parking that's actually right there, they can get out and just be there versus having to walk all the way.
Well, I mean, if I need to add a couple of parking spaces, that's, that's not an issue. It's just, you know, it's, if that's your dreathers, if you want to see a couple of parking spaces here or there, I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to it. My thoughts and vision was more, everything's in close proximity there. The tot lot and everything's in the dead center of the subdivision. It's within, you know, walking distance or you need to pull your car up over and park.
I would like to suggest that if you were to break both of your legs and you were on crutches, I mean, no matter at Derek's age, it would be difficult to get anywhere with your children if you're having to do that. So would parking places be out of the question? I mean, so would that, because I'm having such a hard time seeing the plans, where would that would be in proximity to fields?
Well, I would put the handicap parking somewhere around where the ponds, where I've got the ponds located there and between lots like 87 and 92 in that vicinity. I mean, I'd put some, you know, a couple of parks. If I need to put a handicap parking spot there, you know, a couple of those for handicap access, I mean, we could do, we could do it there. You know, right next to like 92, along that road, along the paved road, I could come off with a couple of spots right next to 92 on the corner there of 92 and 87 if I need to. Because I could add, I mean, I could add some parking right in front of the tot lot and the pavilion, you know, for handicap access if that's what the dreathers, if y'all are more concerned about that.
I don't think it has to be for handicap access, those requirements, but just parking places for anyone who might.
Yeah, well, just look at adding a handful of parking spaces with a couple of handicaps down in front of the pond next to the pavilion. I mean, I could do that and that. And then you're right there at the two trailhead walking deal to be at the multipurpose field.
We haven't had a PUD in a while. Do these require HOAs?
Yes, we're going to have a, yes, we're having HOA because there's detention ponds to be maintained along with the walking trails and the multipurpose fields, tot lots, stuff like that. And of course, the entrance, irrigation and stuff like that.
That's what I thought, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
And that'll be managed by a third party?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. That's a very good point. But the main thing, I mean, the parking spots is kind of what, you don't want to have parking spots at the trailheads and the pavilion and stuff like that, as many as I can get. Anything else you could see or suggest to make it better or something I need to move around or?
What was, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I didn't see in the packet the recommendations of the planning commission, was it?
It was, I think there was one, it was, it was all but one voted for.
It was a positive recommendation.
I have a copy of the minutes that I can read to you. Mayor Carroll made a motion for approval with the recommendations from the staff report, the additional trail outlet, all sides of the homes to be masonry products. I know we're talking about brick tonight, that's not what was discussed.
Well, yeah, I meant masonry, you're correct, yeah.
Crusher run material on the trails, protect the streams and the second entrance to the multipurpose fields. Vote was taken and all were in favor except for one person.
So our master plan that we're working on. This. Do we think this is going to fit into that plan? I mean, I have a real concern about us just continuing to do stuff and we're waiting for this master plan.
Oh, master.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, I'm so sorry, the comprehensive plan. It's still the new year, early.
Oh, it is.
I mean, do we know if?
I don't remember seeing that addressed in discussions that I've been involved in with the comp plan.
I believe it meets the current land use map. Kristen, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. There was actually a plan for this property several, at least a decade ago that was for much more dense condos. It was almost like a golf, a golf resort type of residential neighborhood that was going to be much more dense than this, so. We don't know what the, you know, the future land use map will look like, but as far as the old one, it would, yeah, it would match.
Well, and I will say, looking at this proposal compared to PUD proposals we've looked at in the past, this one's, this one's much better in terms of lot size. I mean, we're approaching half acre lots, I mean, with the exception of the 33% roughly of the 15,000.
If you take the average of it, we're well over, exceeds that. If you do half acre, based on the acreage, we can get 244 lots. But we're only at 141, so you're exactly right there.
Mr. Reed, looking at this, I'm going to go back to this multipurpose field. I'm sure you're tired of hearing it, but. What, what I would like to see personally is lot 41 taken out with a drive up entrance to that multi-use field and you can put your parking in there. Maybe you make lot 40 and I think that's 42, a little bit bigger maybe. But, because I think that would take care of some issues. You'll have some parking there. You have the ability to drive up to the use of the field. If people want to take soccer nets, anything like that to use there, they can easily do so. Or lot 42, I mean, whichever.
But you want that roughly or suggesting that roughly on round 141 or 41?
Somewhere at that end. And I think it would help your subdivision as well as people see they, hey, we can drive up to this area, use it, easier for picnics, get togethers, just makes it more user friendly. I know if I were looking for an area to move to, that's.
If that's the dreathers, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean. Okay. Right at 141, actually 40, I keep saying 141, 41, lot 41, okay.
I know a lot of these subdivisions I go to, you see these green spaces, they can drive right up to it. There's parking. When you have small kids, you can just get them out of the car and they're right there.
Right there, okay.
You're not having to go traipsing around to get there.
Well, I completely understand what Commissioner Burks is saying. The problem, I'm just thinking of it from an aesthetic standpoint and safety standpoint for that matter. I mean, you've got those adjoining lots that are going to be now next to a parking lot, which to me.
Well, we'll just have to landscape it like, you know, we can, we can landscape it separating the two, I guess somewhat, you know, try to screen if we have to.
I don't think it's a parking lot as much as it is just some parking places. I mean, I think that kind of.
Well, I mean, if you're taking up a, I don't know how big that lot, that particular lot is. It looks like one of the larger lots. So you're taking a 20,000 square foot lot and making it into parking. That's a lot of, it's a lot of space.
Now, I can add a lot of parking in the detention ponds areas over more in the center portion of the development. There in those ponds, I can add parking there, Burks. I know, I know you're suggesting that up in 41. And that's at the head of the walking, kind of the center point of both the walking trails and, and where the pavilion and the tot lot is.
I don't necessarily care where in there you put it, I'm saying.
Look at somewhere.
Parking with some easy access to that area.
I got you, okay.
Again, if you've got small kids, a baby, one hand.
Well, because I could add, I could add several spaces down there by the pond and where that cul-de-sac is going up in those four lots, 86, 89, in that little area. And that's kind of the center point of the ball fields or the multipurpose fields and the pavilion and tot lot. It's more centralized if that's, if y'all are cool with that. And that way I won't be losing a lot or Tony won't be losing a lot. I won't get in trouble.
Commissioner Lucas?
The only thing that jumps out at me, I'll go ahead and tell you, if I was looking for a place to live, whether or not it had a walking trail would not appease me whatsoever because I don't exercise. Secondly, if I was going to use a walking trail, I probably wouldn't have a problem walking to the trail. So I'm kind of out on that discussion. The only thing that, that kind of does, that I'd like to see, and I do understand for security reasons, the one entrance. I get that and I actually appreciate that. My only thing is if I'm coming in from Interstate 40 and I hit 96 and I come down Lake Road, all that traffic that's going to be coming from that direction now has to go all the way down Lake Road, then go to Cox and then come up into your subdivision. And I wonder about the people that would be leaving from that subdivision, going to work maybe in Bellevue or Dixon and could come down Cox as opposed to going up. So I kind of like the idea of if I was going to move there, that I have that flexibility and it doesn't put all that traffic right there on Cox. You can, maybe we could split it up. I mean, obviously, we don't know who's going to be moving there and where they're going to be traveling to. I get that too.
What we're, I agree with what you're saying. What we thought of also is we're worried that that would be a cut through through our subdivision. People instead of coming down Lake Road to shoot down the thing, would use our subdivision as a cut through that doesn't live there. They'd turn off and, because I do, I'm bad about, I'll do it if I can get from point A to point B quicker and get through a lot of traffic. We felt that that, they would cut through there and not be the people and be flying through there and not be the people that actually live there. That was our only dreathers and we really liked the one entrance for security purposes, especially with a bigger home. We just, you know, and it really helps.
And I don't disagree with that, that security issue, I get that.
Especially with kids and stuff at that one focal point there in the middle of the subdivision. I mean, it'd be easier, you know, to chase somebody, you know, where they're going. Now, there's only one way out. But that was, that's kind of our vision. But we did look at that originally. That's why we keep going back to that gate, but still pave it for a mercy.
Yeah, no, I get that. There's no way to put a gate that's got a, with those little key cards that they can, I mean, I know that's more money, right? I get that.
Well, it's, yeah, but it's, you know, we, we were tasked to go meet with emergency management guys and determine what they wanted to see there. And they wanted that locks box and that's what we proposed in this booklet and the special gates and stuff for them, so. But, you know, I mean, I guess you could, everybody could have a.
I'm not trying to add cost to your thing. I'm just, me personally, I'm thinking if I'm, I'm trying to keep the traffic as equal as I can in different areas and not put 140 homes all traveling one direction every day at 5 o'clock. And all of a sudden now we have a backup on 100 and now we have a backup on Cox Pike as well, so.
And Mr. Reed, I don't think you're implying that the fire department wanted this versus a second entrance. You're saying if they wanted some other way to get in there, correct?
Yeah, and we wanted, that's why we're providing a second entrance. We were, you know, it, you know, we were just tasked to meet with them and if we locked that, what would they, what would they recommend? And that's what we've done and that's what they've suggested. I mean, our dreathers is to keep it shut, but if it's y'all's that want to keep it open, we just felt the way and the differences, it was more beneficial to us to leave still the one entrance. Because we're providing a left turn lane that's not required in the traffic study, but we feel that to be safe, safer, we're going to go ahead and propose it because the two entrances that are there on Hall Lane, they're close together to make a nice left turn lane in there and then making that main boulevard double for two, for three cars to go down to get in and out.
Mr. Lucas, were you, where were you talking about the second entrance? Is that?
Lake Road.
Where the, the emergency exit or entrance would be.
And as far as safety, I mean, if you only have two entrances, it'd be hard for anybody to exit that community from, unless they're going out one of those.
That's right.
So, you know, if you have an entrance on Lake and an entrance on O Cox Pike, Cox Pike, I mean, you've still got only two places that a police officer would need to be.
Yeah, but that narrows, yeah, that limits your, another, you know, your more, they got to give them another spot to get out of and people coming in. What our thoughts are, not as far as people coming in and out, is that people coming down that road, just like he brought up, they're going to come, they would shoot through, my, our thoughts were they would shoot through our trap. They might not, but if I'm driving through there and that Lake Road's backed up all the time, I would go through that subdivision knowing it's got a nice big entrance in the left turn lane at the main entrance to get out quick. That'd be where I'd go. But that's our thought only.
I'm glad that Franklin didn't think that way because it'd take me another hour to get to work because I go through subdivisions all the time.
And to be clear, I don't think, I mean, I don't drive Lake Road often, but I've never been on it when there was a ton of traffic. But I think now there is going to be because they're all going to be coming, not all of them. You're going to have a good majority coming down Lake Road. I mean, if every, if everybody's got two cars in this subdivision, you got 141 homes. That's a lot of cars on Cox Pike.
If y'all want it open, we're fine. That's just less expense for Tony as far as the gate and entrance and stuff like it. We'll just keep it with the one, yeah, just be a little two lane ingress egress right there and just be a paved, you know, it won't have turn lanes or anything right there because it's only that 30 foot right away. It's, and it's not going to be curb and gutter that section. It'll be just a two lane drive going out because that's all we have is a 30, which is, is fine. But that, but it'll push everybody to that other entrance because you can get in and out of there quicker.
I think, I think if we went that route too, Commissioner Lucas, it might not be wide enough for safety reasons to be appropriate in and out of the subdivision.
We, we made the pavement 18 foot wide, so you could actually get two vehicles on it and it's big enough for fire trucks and stuff to come through there. So that's why we made sure that 30 foot. So I worked out that with Will, you know, a month or so ago. Will Owens here on the widths of that and the pavements and stuff. It's just not curb and gutter, just that little section right there is not curb and gutter. But it is a paved section for traffic. It'll meet y'all's standards except no curb and gutter. So if y'all still want that, I just want to make sure you know that it's going to be, you know, just two cars and. Yeah, if y'all wanted to.
But it's wide enough that it could be in and out?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's, and, you know, it's a short distance, so I, I don't feel that it would be a hindrance to anybody. It's not like they're traveling a mile, that narrowed down. Of course, the narrower the roads, the slower the traffic tends to go anyhow, which, and that's such a short little section between those two lots. I think if that's the druthers of y'all, for us just not to put a gate there and keep it open, and we'll call it our second entrance, but our main focal point though, our entrance, we want, and we're gonna do nice landscaping with irrigation, it's gonna all be up front with turn lanes and stuff.
Of course.
But if y'all are cool with that, then we'll remove the-
As a one-way?
Well, no, they're two, both were-
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Burks.
Thank you. If, if we can't, if we, if we don't have a fifty-foot right away, or when I say we, you, you guys, don't have the fifty-foot right away to do that entrance up like you would do the other entrance with curb and gutter and make it just as nice as the other entrance, because you can't acquire additional right away or more land, whatever.
And we've tried, we've tried, we have tried to get-
My preference is you gate it and you, and you do as proposed. I just, you know, I don't think any of the other solutions that I've heard just don't really make a lot of sense to me, making it a one-way on, you know, or attempting to make it a one-way, although we know that it'll be used otherwise. And, you know, I, I just, I think it's better, better as proposed. And if, if emergencies, you know, if fire and police are okay with it, the way that's proposed, and then, to me, it, it went through the planning commission and it was approved there or recommended there, I just don't see making that change here.
I'm up for whatever, y'all just, what consensus is, I'll do whichever, either, either or, y'all just tell me.
And Mr. Reed, I, I just want to clarify, so there's no miscommunication later on. Is it all brick or all masonry?
All masonry product. I'm sorry, she, she's, in the booklet it says, you know, all four sides are gonna be a masonry product, either brick, hardy, stone, you know, stuff like that. But all four sides, you know, of course, at the planning commission, you remember, there was a huge debate on three sides and seventy-five percent, you know, masonry product, and we ended up just making it one hundred percent, but masonry product. You are correct, Mr. Reed.
Any further discussion?
And to clarify, is this considered the first reading, because it was here previously?
First read.
Okay, so it will have to come back. And in the meantime, all those changes can be made and brought to us for the second reading to review?
What I prefer?
I'll, I'm just gonna get a clearer, right now, I'm gonna add parking spaces to what we talked about, kind of the entrance off the road, parking spaces to those, and then I'm still trying to figure out, once we, once y'all make a decision, if y'all want me to do the gate or not do the gate, to remove that for the next meeting, for the second entrance. I'll do wood.
Can I make a suggestion that it's a, it's a small change? If you could do two versions, one with out the gate there and either whatever y'all think would be better, a one-way or a two-way, and with the gate, with all the other changes on both of them, so we can kind of look at it. It's a little easier if you can see it, visualize it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then I'll withdraw my second.
Motion to add for lack of second.
I'd make a motion to approve with the changes we've discussed today, and ask that you provide two versions of it as far as dealing with that second entrance, whether one with its gated as is, another one with an entrance or exit, either two-way or one which, whichever y'all think is better.
Okay.
And one thing you may want to consider is the traffic flow in the morning with school. Might, you might want to follow that traffic in, in the afternoon versus an exit in the morning with the school traffic. So, you might want to consider how that would work too, because you shouldn't have the school traffic in the after, late afternoons of people returning home.
Yep, I'll, I'll just do two blowups, one with and one without, and we'll-
And I will second that motion with the request that we get a copy that we can really see.
I can print them out as big as you want. I just put it in this booklet, and that's what's up for you. You tell me, I'll put it on twenty-four by thirty-six for you.
Well, no, no, it's not the size, it's all the grayed-out stuff that we really can't see numbers. I mean, what I'm looking at, it's hard for me to see.
It is on that little bit, and I, I, do you want me to bring a twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheet so we can color?
If you want to, that'll be lovely.
Whatever y'all want.
That will be lovely, if you want to do that. So, I will second the motion.
We have a first by Commissioner Burks and a second by Vice Mayor Rainey. Is there any discussion?
But if it's a PUD, I thought if it, if it were labeled as a PUD, then it was different. That we could change stuff here before we rezoned it.
That, that would make sense to me, actually. There's enough time to do it, to get it to the planning commission, to get it an approval or not, at that point, and it, if it is, and still come back, I think by the next meeting here.
Could I?
Is there not?
We don't have time to advertise for public hearing by the next meeting.
What, but we're not really changing anything on the master plan, are we, to go back? We're not changing any lots, the lot numbers, acreage, everything's the same. All that, their requesting, right, are just the parking spaces?
And the entrance.
And the entrance, but that was talked about last time, it was a-
But I guess if I'm hearing the attorney right, what he's saying is if you're adding parking spaces to that, that's not on this plan. So, it would have to, it's not on this plan. And, and the second entrance, the way we're talking about-
If you change it, if, if you move the gate.
Correct, correct.
There's no way around that. It's a loophole. Yes, sir, yes, sir, and-
So, was our only option to-
Well, I, I think the, the parking spaces certainly seems immaterial. The, the second entrance is the one that, that I'm interested in hearing more input on, and which is why, which is why I moved to approve it as is originally, because I agree. I mean, the planning commission has looked at it, they have vetted it. I thought we used to always get those minutes in our packet. Can we get those in the future from the planning commission? I know that we used to get them, or I thought we did. Is, let me ask this procedurally, since this is a first read, if we, if we, if we moved, or if I, whatever we've done, we've changed the motion, but if, if we approved it as is, and it went back to the planning commission just to discuss, just for the purpose of discussing the second entrance before it came back to us for second read, would there be anything wrong with that? That would, that would not create a delay? So, we could, we could approve it as is on first read, send it back to the planning commission with the, and task them essentially with, hey, we've, we've requested these two changes, please give us your, you know, your recommendation, because they have a meeting, I guess, next week. And then, we still, we still have time to get it published for the public hearing and to be on the next BOC agenda.
That's great. It is next Tuesday. I had to check real quick. And there was some lengthy discussion about some members wanting, I think, wanting a second entrance there versus, because I think it was reported to the planning commission a couple of times, if I recall.
Yeah.
There was some discussion about some members did want a second entrance, some were like, well, kind of okay with maybe splitting the baby, so to speak. So, I think it would probably be a good idea to send it back for them to review with that proposal of a second entrance or a, just an exit or just an entrance. I guess if it's sent back for that purpose, Mr. Potter, would they then have to vote on it again, or just?
I can open up-
I'm good with that.
They look at it, and if you're on that body, you know that it's been discussed and looked at.
Quite a bit.
And they may say, you don't think it's necessary, and, you know, since it can't look like a program intervention, and they say, yeah, I think that's a good idea. I don't think it would affect you voting on it for the final reading after we get a, a thing to do. Trying to address what the prospectively issue, when we get these, when we have these things come out of the planning commission, and they come up with the BOC, we've got, we have a planning commission for a purpose. You guys are opening up authority in the city, there's no doubt about it, if you believe you're adopting or not adopting these plans. My suggestion would be that if you've got substantial changes to them, that you defer voting on it and refer it back to the planning commission with your suggestions rather than adopt with your contingencies.
I, I agree with Mr. Potter. I don't really care for contingencies, because sometimes they get lost. I, I'll go with your suggestion on that, that I would move to defer and ask that this be sent back to the planning commission for the next meeting Tuesday for discussion regarding those additional parking spots and possibly a second entrance there. Mr. Reed, it would probably make sense to go and have those drawings ready so that we can look at them at that meeting. Can really quickly add-
Is this, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm calling out, is, is this the meeting tomorrow, or be Tuesday, is that opening up, are we just asking for their opinion? We're not asking for a whole nother revote on the whole thing, correct? It's just an opinion on the parking spaces? So, that, that's gonna bump us a whole nother month. Yeah, we've already been, is there any way, we've already been bumped a whole no-
Real quick, it was my understanding what we were, what we had talked about prior to, to Mr. Potter, talking about deferring, was that we were gonna approve this plan as it is tonight.
Yes, sir.
And then, ask the planning commission to look at it on Tuesday and just say, hey, can we look at that before it comes back up to us for a second, our second vote, in order to avoid them having to drag this out even longer. And I understand what you're saying. I'm asking, and are we getting the same result by deferring versus approving the fir, going ahead and approving this for the first reading?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. I think there are at least two motions that I've heard. Could, could we repeat the two motions? Could, could we repeat the two motions?
We'll clean it up a little bit.
I'll withdraw my motion to defer.
Okay.
That takes care of that second one. There was a second somewhere on my previous motion, I believe.
Vice Mayor Rainey made the second.
I'll withdraw that.
Then I'll withdraw my motion, so now we're working from a clean slate.
All right.
I, I moved to do exactly what the city attorney just said there about approving it with, with it going back to the planning commission, uh, to review those two narrow changes, the parking spaces and the second entrance.
So your motion is to approve this on first reading with the contingency that the board has approved on the second reading that the planning commission look at two suggested minor changes of a second entrance and additional parking spaces.
Correct.
Second.
I have a first by Commissioner Crutcher, a second by Commissioner Lucas, is there any discussion?
Could we, could we hear the motion again? Just read us the motion.
Commissioner Crutcher made a motion to do what the attorney said, which is to, uh, approve it on first reading and send it to the planning commission to review the two narrow changes, which are the parking lot, the addition of the parking lot and the possibility of opening up the second entrance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we go to a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Crutcher.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Burks.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tuesday, Tuesday, I need to have this revised and taken to planning commission for Burke, you're, you're gonna be, Burks, nevermind, okay. So, thank you, guys.
Item eleven E, resolution zero one dash one nine, Vice Mayor Rainey.
Resolution zero nine dash nineteen, a resolution of the City of Fairview authorizing the city manager to contract with Civil and Environmental Consultants, CEC, for engineering services related to the remediation plan for the city's roads, bridges and adjacent drainage systems. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Burks, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Rainey.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Burks.
Aye.
Crutcher.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Subsection F, resolution zero two dash nineteen, Vice Mayor Rainey.
A resolution of the City of Fairview authorizing the city manager to contract with grindstone roofing and restoration for maintenance repairs on, on the city hall building, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Burks, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we go to a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Rainey.
Aye.
Burks.
Aye.
Crutcher.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Item twelve, commission, communications from the mayor and commissioners, Commissioner Burks.
Um, hope everyone had a great holiday season. Look forward to a new year, serving with all of y'all. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Crutcher.
Nothing to note, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Lucas.
Nothing to note, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Vice Mayor Rainey.
Nothing to note, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, nothing from me, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.